Good evening. I'm sorry, this one. This meeting of the Plenary Board of the City of Elizabeth now comes to order. This meeting of the Plenary Board of the City of Elizabeth, meeting this Thursday, the fourth day of our convention in the year 2012, has been newly advertised according to the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act, NJSA, ten to four, dash six, as a special scheduled meeting. The board will have the amended meeting schedule. Notice that this meeting is the furnished of the Star Ledger on Friday, January twenty-seventh, two thousand and twelve. Notice is of the cases incurred or also published in the Star Ledger at least ten days before today. Articles of common court.
Councilman Lawden.
Here.
Commissioner Gonzalez, here. Commissioner Carvalho, here. Commissioner Calhanoglu. Commissioner Van Der Schen. Commissioner Breng. Secretary Urban. Commissioner Chaochow.
Here.
Commissioner Nunes.
Here.
Vice President Ross, here. Chairman Hahn.
Here. Please rise from the platform. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your honor, which stands on my nation under God, equal to physical, liberty, and justice for all.
First quarter of business is to approve the minutes of the September thirteenth regular of the September thirteenth special meeting. May I have motion?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Gonzalez, second by Vice Chairman Ross.
Vice President Ross. Councilman Lawden.
Aye.
Commissioner Gonzalez, aye. Commissioner Carvalho, aye. Commissioner Chaochow.
Upstanding.
Commissioner Nunes, aye. Vice President Ross, aye. Chairman Hahn.
Aye. This is our proof. Okay, we have some resolutions that have to be, uh, more advised since last meeting. In the matter of the Rayanu Day application, P four-ten, decided on, on September thirteenth, for the property at one seventy, dash one seventy-four, at one seventy-sixty. At what street? First Street. Is it in the resolution?
Is that correct?
Okay, we have a resolution. Okay. Uh, first Street, um, can you say, uh, I maintain the resolution to approve the motion to approve the resolution.
Mr. Speaker.
Motion by Commissioner Carvalho.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Nunes. Order of the board.
Councilman Lawden.
Aye.
Commissioner Gonzalez, aye. Commissioner Carvalho, aye. Commissioner Chaochow.
Upstanding.
Vice President Ross, aye. Commissioner Nunes, aye. Vice, uh, Chairman Hahn.
Aye. Matter of application, P twelve, dash twelve, decided on September thirteenth, two thousand and twelve, in regards to property, one fifty-eight, dash one sixty-eight, First Street, two hundred, dash two hundred and six, Third Street, two hundred and two, two hundred and fourteen, Third Street, housing authority of the City of Elizabeth, may I have a motion? So, this is a motion by Commissioner, by, Councilman Lawden, second by Commissioner Gonzalez. Order.
Councilman Lawden.
Aye.
Commissioner Gonzalez, aye. Commissioner Carvalho, aye. Commissioner Chaochow.
Upstanding.
Commissioner Nunes, aye. Vice President Ross, aye. Chairman Hahn.
Aye. The last resolution tonight is in the matter of East Grand Division LLC, application, P thirteen, twelve, the property located with frontage on East Grand Division and Livingston Street, located in the Trumbull Street Redevelopment Land, may I have a, uh, a, uh, a, uh, a, uh, here are our parents please, sir? Uh, c- 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 I don't think any of my parents were staying. Just stay, stay. Our calls.
I, uh, I don't want to turn the stuff in traffic outside. Uh, and what was the weight of it? Did it carry too little or too much?
Just one more. But we will, we will take this as a question. Okay, so we move on to application, P ten, twelve, six, twenty-four, Bay Avenue. Hold on, hurry, is, uh, Mr. Alexander here?
Yes, we're here, Mr. Chairman.
Your parents, sir?
Uh, we need to, uh, Tom Alexander. Yes, sir. Let me just tell you about the moment. That coastal line is horrible to hear in, and just, like, when you're, like, pull that line down, I'm gonna talk to him right away. Okay. Uh, yeah, any, uh, ladies and gentlemen, Tom Alexander, here, for Mr. Curry, there, uh, six twenty-four, Bay Avenue, which basically is a house and a tiny supply. We have five for a subdivision of the lot. That's the point, or, maybe today, zoning table, which we are now asking for a waiver of, uh, Mr. Curry, there's no intention of building the lot, um, so, and, just, I think on this, uh, I, 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 oh, I'm sorry, uh, Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm sorry, we're asking for a waiver of the zoning table. Uh, recently, we got a house, made a lot, trying to subdivide the lot from the house, but we have no intentions of building anything on the property. And we just think it's unnecessary waste of time and expense to, uh, try and complicate what it might look like.
Can I ask you something, Mr. President? Why subdivide?
Uh, with the, uh, Mr. Curry, he thinks he's entitled to subdivide because at some point he may wish himself a property.
And he would, and we're gonna make wishes to his own table. I mean, I, I don't know why they all do that, I don't know if that law's fine, but that is only the tip of my teeth to see.
But we had a survey submitted, checked it out very thoroughly.
Don't have evidence that hasn't been.
Well, just, well, we have the, uh, uh, if you're looking at, uh, for you, is the
let, asking for a waiver, uh, this board does not grant waivers lightly on subdivisions or any other issue. I mean, what, I mean, if, if you're subdividing a property, but the natural flow that we hear is, we're gonna build something in that property, otherwise we'll subdivide. I mean, it's a very nice little park area, it's very pretty, and that center thing, and you, uh, get, so unless you're applying, once and twice, why subdivide? The only way to get this subdivision is to have a zoning table.
And, Mr. Curry.
Do you hear me, Mr. Chairman? Do you hear me?
Join in, Victor. You wrote to Solomon Square, any questions on your vehicle, and the whole, and the, and the seat, Victor.
Victor, the name, ladder.
Your station name, your name, Victor.
Paul Michael, Corvay Park.
Your address?
Twenty-four, twenty, and I don't know where, and it's more, it's, uh.
Now, Mr. Curry, uh, taking over the property, you have six twenty-four, maybe, uh, and, uh, have you, uh, surveyed the, the property?
You have surveyed it?
Yes, sir. And are the last, uh, street, are they one last, uh, street, forty feet? A hundred feet?
Right, uh, we recall that it's built on a lot, it needs to. You, you can, well, we, we, it's built on a lot, on a lot, and, and the front of, the front to the back is as safe as possible, so that's true, most of the, all.
Victor, which one do you have?
Um, only, you would compress this information because the city has an ordinance that allows you to, uh, damage, etc. You do not know on this application if any barriers are created. The only way you can tell if barriers are created is if your engineers, like, or professionals, this is only stated. So, he is not an engineer, he is not a professional. No one is here to make the, uh, are there any barriers created, but, uh, you don't know.
Sometimes, when, when, this thing is saying very clearly, sometimes when you subdivide it, you create barriers, and we don't know that. You, you're saying that most of the lots are a hundred feet deep by forty feet wide. What about the ones that are deeper, shallower? We don't know. We have to have a survey, a chart, at least, that shows us. Survey's nice, like, you have a survey for three lots? That's the rest of the lot. I mean, we have an ordinance, as far as I'm concerned, this is something that we can't waive because without seeing the entirety of the lot, we can't make a decision. I mean, it, it's hard to make a decision even though we see the whole chart, not seeing the whole, like, yeah, I, you know, I sat on this board for twenty years, I've never seen a subdivision without a zoning table, and I'm gonna make a start from there. Now, can I ask you a question, Mr. Speaker? Why do you subdivide, and you have no intention of building?
Well, mainly, this is, the house, we, we've committed that house, I think, in forty-seven. I've been with the challenge over the year, that, that, I need to sell this, make travel, taking care of it over two weeks. My fault was that, a lot less to, this, this is built on a lot, a builder, we lucky that, because that house is sold, it's, uh, it's sold, it needs a lot of work, so I thought a builder, we lucky that, 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 that house, and I built that house, and then, there's more work on that house, because I'm not a contractor, this is.
You're, you're, so what you're saying is, uh, the issue to understand as well as that, you're, you're kind of like, except that the existing house, to my real thinking, builder, would buy that with the other lot, and pay the premium for a lot, one way or another, and then, probably, in the condition that that house, that house, you said, the building forty-six.
Yeah, thirty-six, forty-six.
So, then, so, then, it's all, it's all, it's all, it's all, any builder worth a soul to buy that, demolish the house, come before this, or request a subdivision, and, uh, build, you know, and commission build.
I disagree with you, Paul. Here's my fault, that they go to, to, all, like, usually what happens, a builder, who 's, uh, probably asking all this, is subdividing a lot of.
Sorry, sir, it's, uh, uh, I can't understand what you're saying.
If the builder goes, like, will say, buy, or, or, take, submit a contract, that he's gonna need to, to prove, that's gonna take me way too far along, so I need to, uh, pretty much, uh, the house as soon as I can. So, that's the reason, I'm, 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 I'm gonna work now, and then, it's gonna be out of the way, and.
And you're doing the work for the, for whoever applies it, like, a person that not, you know. Yeah, because somebody wants to buy that a lot, has his, and build a larger house.
But, that, that's, uh, the subdivision, and, and the point is, if you subdivide that, they have to give the effort, the contingency, and to re, reconsolidate the lots, so I. Away with that, sir.
Like, it, to me, to my real thinking, there's no way that, that I could go to subdivide this, I don't know, my full permission, I could go to subdivide this lot without seeing the table, because, as chairman, I feel a responsibility that should be followed in the hands of the City of Elizabeth, so, I mean, I'm just imagining your situation. This is the going idea, you have put in a request. You put in a request back then, mightn't it be somebody who wants to tell them that the sacrifice was June? Right, June, June, in two three, on June, the twenty-seventh, that, that, so, it's been, you know, it's, uh?
Well, to, 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 quick with this, to move this along, I'm looking at the drawing picture, there's a note on the agency's, the very, uh, plan, it says, uh, says the property is in U R one. The R one, standard lot, is fifty feet. You can reduce it to forty feet if the prevailing prevailing is with this forty, there's no evidence that prevailing with this forty feet is this application, but we do not know if both the lot require a variant, and if, if, if no subversion. So, that's why we, we instructed this department to, to prepare a zoning table.
The law says, council, if the law says fifty feet, that's what, uh, the, the building of a lot is, is, okay? You can't make a forty-foot lot if the prevailing of the lot is what's the percentage?
Uh, it has to be eighty percent.
Eighty percent of the elements of the lot would be forty feet, then you can say forty feet, because the prevailing of the lot, as of now, without any charter, and my people to, uh, and the bottom line is, can't subdivide a lot unless it's fifty and fifty for now, what is your, what is your drawing share in eighty-foot lot?
Eighty foot, the width.
The width of the, yes, lots are eighty feet.
Yes.
How are you making two fifty-foot lots out there? If you have one feet, you can do this.
And, and we can't vote to agree the law that's followed.
Yeah, we can't, right, we can't, right, building of a lot, by definition, is a fifty-foot lot. If we subdivide this, we create two non-building of a lot. Okay, Victor?
Yeah, I think I saw a survey, it was, uh, quite funny.
Is your survey, or somebody who does surveys, who is, uh?
I'm, uh, I'm, 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 the bottom line is, 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 maybe, just, like, you, the ordinance states, and there's no way around that.
My suggestion is, if, if you get.
Well, if, if, if formal request, uh, if, 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 uh, right, we, we need to, right,
we, we need to decide whether to break, or not, don't break the way, the only way you're gonna get this subdivision is by getting that charter. And I think that's the most expeditions that you can do. Unless you have some other test, one, one, it'll be a case for, is there anyone in the audience, uh, Commissioner, any question? Is there anyone in the audience who has any concern regarding this application, is that coming forward? Seeing none, Commissioner, for this, uh, of granting or not granting any of this request for waiver?
Need for.
Make, I need a motion.
Those who are.
For a motion to, to grant, without.
Not to grant.
Motion not to grant, so that a yes vote is a not to grant vote. Second, something, second by Commissioner Nunes, the motion was made by Commissioner Carvalho, order this call.
Well, we hope, uh, uh, I mean, I think.
We're voting, the motion was made not to grant the waiver, and therefore, if you vote yes, and we're voting to not to grant the waiver.
Councilman Lawden.
Yes.
Commissioner Gonzalez, aye. Commissioner Carvalho, aye. Commissioner Chaochow.
Yes.
Commissioner Nunes, aye. Vice President Ross, aye. Chairman Hahn.
Aye. Here, in, in the current part of the world. Yeah, yes. Okay, um, at this, at this point in time, we go back to, uh, the resolution that was skipped. Uh, the next is resolution, again, in the matter of East Grand Division LLC, application, P thirteen, twelve, decided on September thirteenth, for the property with frontage on East Grand Division and Livingston Street, located in areas governed by the Trumbull Street Redevelopment Land and the Light, Limited Light, unless it was over the land, there's some ordinance of the city. Council, your parents are in, uh?
Yeah, great, so, uh, great, please, shorten, and, and, uh. Be gay. Good, I hear you.
I hear you. Are mature people, the audience here?
Uh, I'm up here, I was, uh, actually, with our resolution, I was here, this, uh, drive-by, yesterday, and had the actual review, and then, was in contact with the board council earlier this morning, with my comments, and I'm not sure if those comments were circulated, I have copies of my comments, um, I'll, I'll, just, some, summarize it in a nutshell.
Council. One of the comments that you circulated, is a change in the subdivision, that was presented.
I will get some, let me just, let me just indicate my two concerns. My two concerns were that, uh, as I, uh, my understanding, my team's understanding that we left there was that we had secured preliminary files, uh, for the project, but lack consolidation as required, and that, um, the board recognized that we had signed lease for K food, um, supermarket, so that that part of the project was, in fact, um, secured, but that the other tenants on the project were not yet leased, so that, um, confirmation of all the aspects of the project could not be finalized, um, so it's mattered that we had a free, um, to work, um, with your consult, um, with, um, armor, and, to the extent that there were any modifications relative to those tenants for retail, or best food, or bank, that would, um, address any concern that were, if there were any changes that were deemed significant changes, that we would return, and then, application would be poured.
I would future date.
I'd, I'd future date, absolutely, um, but that, if, if those plans were going to conform, as of the layout that the board had seen, that, um, those tenants could be handled in a straighter way in terms of the, um, uh, finalization of those plans, it was also my understanding that the lack consolidation, um, could be handled as any other, any lack consolidation, um, by D, um, which is how municipal land use law provides, um, when I got the resolution, for the first time, uh, references made to, um, section forty-seven of municipal land use law, which is the minor subdivision section, and we don't have a subdivision, um, in fact, we have a reverse of a subdivision, which is consolidation of lots, which expressly exents by municipal land use law as a subdivision, so I became concerned that the terminology being used in the resolution, and the requirements that we perfect any kind of lack consolidation, which would be doing by D, following acquisition and title, both posting in the other category under about, um, by, that file on law, um, provisions, so, together with some other minor, minor comments, which sort of were not significant, those were my two concerns, one, um, the manner in which we deal with our professionals for an all agreement, that we have the obligation to resolve all issues for all of the tenants, um, and we have to address the driveway, and all the issues that we talked about, um, but the resolution says all of the tenants, that, that we can handle the issues relative to the supermarket, so we can get that project, that aspect going, the resolution was drafted, says we have to address all of the tenants, um, and then the second issue was the lack consolidation, those were the two substantive issues. So, unfortunately, I, I had to address the required, uh, here, and so, this evening, and again, to time and hours, and I have today.
Yes, I know the case.
Correct.
Can you tell us what it was?
Yes, uh, which one, we, like, what, um, uh, but I think it can be handled pretty, easily, in the, in the conditions, uh, the lack consolidation, page seven, uh, on, on what, subdivision, personally, specifically references the statute for some of this. Okay. There's one, I guess, I'll just, uh.
As may be required.
That's, I, that's not one of the necessary changes, I, and, and, is that, I think, the purpose of the board, the board.
I see some spelling mistakes.
Yes, there was, and there were some, and there were, it was a reference, there were some, this, uh, there was reference to three lots, it's the two, so those were all minor, um.
There were three lots, uh? It was the bottom of Jersey Coast Transit, a lot of the city, and then, the one that's owned by, company in the corner, there were three lots, that was the testimony that was given in the SD.
Um, the survey, well, it's referenced in the, uh.
Survey with.
No, we can look at that.
Testimony, he said.
Mister, that, uh, also, they have asked the property, and his first paragraph, and his last, four twenty-nine, and eleven twenty-three, so board council, and vice, has two lots in one paragraph, and three in another, so I pointed out his disreferencing of two and three. My first substantive concern is on page seven, where it refers, lack consolidation pursuant to statute, which is forty-seven. There could simply be an issue of the reference to statute. Forty-seven is wholly irrelevant, that's the minor subdivision statute, do not have a minor subdivision application, is ordered not here, minor subdivision application. And definition of subdivision in municipal land use law expressly exempts lack consolidation by D, or other reported instrument. I, I never got it first time, or, I got it before I, yesterday. I would have, uh, 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 uh.
I don't think she ever requests, did you ever request it?
Yes, I, I'm so close to that, uh.
And requested a contract?
He called it a company, he worked for, uh, so he has.
Never requested, uh, it, 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 uh, subdivision needs, and, uh, calling, uh, let's see, the industry.
It's, uh, it's, uh, uh.
You know, like, you got, uh, I'm sorry, when you read it, you yourself, you get the reference.
It, it, it does say in the statute, that it is not, that a subdivision does not include consolidation of existing lots by D, or other reported instrument, however, it does say that a subdivision includes the term re-subdivision, which can be considered a consolidation of lots, because you have three lots, or two lots, I'm not sure which you have, just, that seems to be a question, that the re-sub by D, you're changing the lot lines to consolidate those, those properties, but in any case, it, it's not relevant, because, in this application, as far as I am aware, was based on what was presented at last meeting, which was the entire parcel of land to be consolidated into one, so.
Lack consolidation, which was exactly what.
But it doesn't matter, because we can't change the fact that the lots are gonna be consolidated in purposes of this site, like, uh.
But, that's not my point, my point is, you can make a subdivision under section forty-seven, which actually triggers all kinds of alterations. which triggers all kinds of other issues of subdivision under municipal land use law. And play a correction within a hundred and ninety days, which is a whole subdivision in this application.
Since I wasn't here last meeting, I'm not familiar with exactly what it did. Except what I can tell you is that if you're trying to exclude a parcel of land that was included in your application as part of this approval, then we cannot do that tonight. We cannot do that at a resolution since that was not part of the application.
I'm not trying to do that. I'm trying to point out it's legal. And what's legal is that it says that consolidation of land is not subdivision. This document, this document in this current format says that lack consolidation is approved pursuant to minor subdivision statute.
But the article, the article was that it talked about the fact that you needed to come back at some future date to consolidate the property. We did not approve it because you don't own the pieces of that. How can I approve? How can this board approve something you don't own the pieces?
Mr. Chairman, especially if this board doesn't have any jurisdiction to approve acquisition of property by a private.
But to consolidate the lot, we do have approval. You just ran that approval. And that was one of the stipulations that you presented last month, was that sometime in the future, once your client owned all three properties, two of which the city's property was needed to you and you showed us a letter last month, showing us that the city was going to give you that property without the necessary things that needed to be done. But you did not own the property on the court. And the problem there was that you told us that we're in the process of buying the property. And we told you that once that happened, you had to come back to your, to consolidate it.
First of all, now I'm not a student in that. Let me try to make this as simple as I can. The language in the language of this resolution, Mr. Chairman, says lack consolidation is approved pursuant to NJSA forty-one fifty-five D dash forty-seven. Looking at that statute, that statute is entitled to minor subdivision. That's my.
You're not including consolidation.
We were voting on the lack consolidation.
Now, in the future.
Actually, vote included the lack consolidation of the last meeting. However, what my concern is, is in this number. It says pursuant to NJSA forty-one fifty-five D dash forty-seven, which I explained in the comment, is the minor subdivision statute, which is wholly.
So you're saying that subdivision of whatever forty-seven is wrong?
Correct. It's simply a lack consolidation. The elimination of the line.
So I take that the number forty-seven.
That's what I asked for.
No, that's, I'm. Because I understand not only wanted to just keep out that that statute. I didn't know about that anyway. But that he wanted it as needed. And as needed was not what they approved or as required, I think it was required.
Just needed. It was as required, because we had not yet closed right. It was just a clarification because we know we've got an initial, we're going to run valid approval in the end.
Well, it's not as needed or required as it requires. So it's lack consolidation period, that's why.
It cannot be pursuant to this statute. That's why, that's, that was my question.
Commissioners, I will go over the background here. It's on page seven, I can look it up too. It says lack consolidation is approved pursuant to NJSA forty-one five D David hyphen forty-seven. So we're giving now voiding change to read, lack consolidation is approved.
Correct.
Period.
That's it.
Victor, you want to be counted?
Also, there was a discussion at the last meeting, and I think maybe the point about it is that some of the tenants may have a future subdivision. There was discussion.
But we also said that if that were the case, they would come before us and change. The case that Matt and I were discussing as well. If that's the case, we would need each subdivision to show enough. We could be questioned if it was by D, if it was by plot. Basically, if it was by plot, you could do multiple cross-examens on each subdivision. Part of the right fifty D. So the idea was that if the work of this, of future subdivision of this parcel, was there were going to be changes, we would request that the final plot be submitted to the county clerk's office. So all these must cross the limits for shop.
I don't have a problem with that. In the future, if we're, we have absolutely.
Or even in occasion application, which is one large application. Now, the top priorities, I do not review it as a fragile application. I don't know if what case is missing from the puzzle now, whether it's the driveway or the side triangles etc.
Well, I think that's why I left it in that area. I think we left it at the last meeting that that core piece, part that they dealt with, we can't compare because everything seems to be crammed in that continuous location. The gas station, he's from the bank.
I agree with you. That happened in the fall, sometime in the future. And the bottom line is, I'm going to stick by that. I will say what, I have never, in twenty years of this board and five years as chairman, had so many people trying to go behind the back of this board to get a temporary resolution. I'm really appalled by that. Including front of course the mayor, including front of course other people in the city. This board is incompetent. It makes its decisions. And if you're working with the guys in the future, I would hope that you act more professionally than you did last time. Because the bottom line is, what we decide here is what the city backs down. I don't want to come on.
Well, I'll take that and pass on this, Chairman. I can tell you there was one intent by a majority to agree with it. Can I just tell you?
From day one, the day after, we gave you a letter as we promised you, and that wasn't sufficient to you. And we argued back and forth and back and forth. And then I hear from other people, can't you grant this? The bottom line is, we know what the statutes are. Once in a while, we find a number of the rule. But the bottom line is, I've been here twenty years. And my board has served this city as volunteers. And I would take it personally the way this was dealt with outside of this. Bottom. And hoping.
Can you talk about that?
Yes.
To that, to me, just carrying forward a subdivision and recognition of disorder relative to the future. I have to the next page. I remember a page where you're sorry. I have this, eleven, twelve, thirteen are all ties and I have all issues of subdivision. Eleven, twelve, thirteen. So at some point in the future, if there was subdivision, they may be valid. But at this point in time, you have a subdivision. It says applying to the map, I have almost twice a subdivision for both.
So you don't apply futures or I could take that out. And this is what it is.
That was.
Well, no, because I have no subdivision. It's my policy to make conditions.
But the bottom, what the bottom line was that what Mr. Benavides just said is they might possibly be subdivision in future.
So if we had given what I put in, that's fine. If it was a payment. That's fine.
If it doesn't happen, then we don't need.
That's fine, as long as we can.
I think that's implied in the way of.
So if we had that with regard to eleven, twelve, and thirteen, just to indicate that if land goes to come, well, that's, that would be fine.
I think that was an issue.
We just remember, you know, at some point. And as far as her reporting, so financing, whatever, it just made her very, very harmful. And the other issue was this clarification issue in terms of the actual proof of, Mr. Chairman, in terms of, was our understanding incorrect that these are relatives to the supermarket or in fact consisted that we could receive the supermarket as.
Well, yes, I understood last month that the supermarket was the only thing we could use the money for.
Okay, so to that end, on page.
But glad I was able to ask you. If one of the parcel were not closed along, does that affect the certification of the subdivision?
Well, I think that we have to come through day one, go through our entire project. If you make a determination that anything is not in sync, that we have to come back here. If there's anything.
Because the parcel means that that parcel on the border is not.
We have to come back.
The whole thing is.
Right.
That means supermarket we approved under the condition of that one being one lot. That people goes out the window, you know, for it. We have that parcel in the start of the square one.
And hopefully. I think that's why I mentioned that Matt and I placed it. So that doesn't give it.
About all of these.
Well, there was, it really was testimony that something is useful to make them back. They want to be simple. So we were giving you the ability to look at this as, first of all, a single project. And then the ability to come back, if we logically consolidate and further, further economy, let additional subdivision. If they wanted to be simple, I mean, we would use resources in the meantime or that whatever. But what was never done was a time was never phased. It's never submitted at phase one where, okay, phase one is these two lots and phase two, we three lots. So, you know, they're being crossed three years.
Right. Yeah, I understand.
My concern, concern that Commissioners have last month was the fact that the only thing you had to sign lease with was the supermarket. Everything else is a subdivision. And therefore, the game, they don't have a supermarket, so the funding could be applied for that project. But depending on what was going in all those other pieces, you might, you might not have to come back to this board to get approval for it. And the one thing we made very clear was that that corner on the north east side of that lot, wherever they were sort of creating together, had to be redone with circulation. And that's the basic parcel that you still own. So the bottom line is the concern is that if you don't own that parcel, the whole thing may come out.
Understood. It just says the car at the supermarket right here on page six, which says for each and every tenant. So there's no car at the supermarket. That's one of the such as a concern. There's no car at the ladder supermarket to proceed. That's why I'm asking. Otherwise, I wouldn't agree with you. Page six, the paragraph, if it wasn't now there.
That's what I said.
Says, Mr. Chairman.
There is a, just briefly, my memory of doing that application, I think of supermarket could be more or less carved up. Maybe it was added a corner piece, but there may have to be some library locations.
I think if you're more than right with the supermarket, Commissioners, China, and those of you who are here, I believe the supermarket was pretty well set.
Yes.
The one concern we had was that the driveway to the north of the supermarket area had that, these.
High.
Yes. So the bottom line is, the bottom point is, I see your point of that, and that is something that we have. The supermarket has a, again, I think the language has to be really carefully clarified. And the supermarket is approved based on the entire plan that was presented. If that plan was missing a part, then the whole thing goes out of the window. You have to come back to the resolution. That's my concern.
Or amended.
Or amended, right, or amended, which is represented by. So how do we get that one?
I'll just say that it's approved for.
Who disclaims?
Given the complexity of this product and the fact that numerous buildings have depicted on the plans that have been submitted, not in a tenant's business, and expressly require in the act that it shall be submitted for each and every, and it says tenant. And I'll say except for the supermarket. Based on the entire plan submitted, but if all the lots are not acquired, applicants shall apply for an amended site plan approval.
Yeah, fifteen necessary.
It would have to be, if all the lots are there, it would have to be. There's no, there's no questions. If the whole lot is there, it would be amended site plan.
Okay, Commissioners, you took this discussion, and I apologize for leaving you back. But are there any questions regarding those of you who were here last month? Is there anything that you recall that slips my mind?
Yeah, a question.
Yeah, what, what, what are you supposed to prove? Is there, she wants to prove the site plan to make sure that it's not a, where's the word? It's not a subdivision, but a retaliation. That, that's the least correction. But there is no reference to the fact that it said supermarket is approved as presented. Everything else is up in the air, depending on what we need. So the only change in the language other than forcing out that statute limitation is the fact that supermarket is approved conditioned on the site made in the town. Otherwise, they have to come back for amendment.
So that only proves supermarket and the, we're terrible.
We approved, we approved it, but we stipulated that the type of those in the media, we may have to look at each one, the signs and parking and.
I thought you had to come back because of the, of the gas station, the restaurant.
But the bank, everything other than the supermarket is subject to review by the official office. And if we come back here, then it is come back. That's the way to live. So we are. The supermarket is, yes.
Yes.
If those products stay the way it is, otherwise they have to come back to get an amended approval for that supermarket. Of course, my. They do not know whether.
But, but, but the business of the gas station, they don't own. The bus, the bike. Yeah, they don't own the piece for the, for the gas station.
Restaurant. Gas station, restaurant, convenience.
Oh, we just still there. I said we just still there.
So if they don't acquire that property, they do have to come back here with amended site plan.
What, what, I initially assumed that just sort of the negotiating, the collateral there, and paying attention of the rules of ourselves. Are they paying attention to rules of ourselves?
They sell the property, they would, they would obviously. They don't sell the property. They're not going anywhere. I believe the way it was presented last month was current owner of that property is negotiating for another property. If he can acquire that property, he'll move to it and then sell the stuff.
Yeah, I think that's what they are.
Yes. So in case that goes through, we may have to look at the soul of the engine to make sure that we have circulation. We have to amend the site plan and approve based on the whole triangle that corners for them.
You could leave this.
Victor, hopefully earlier this time than the last time, so we not wait for the last minute.
Well, and as, just on that, you know, we, as, as Ross explained, there are a lot of.
I know what I think, but the pressure that he got.
Understood.
Pressure that he got made me feel to me like it was awful that we might not get that tax grab.
Not meant.
When it was not awful, it was the fault of the fact that we didn't have plans to prepare it. I think that this board, I think that this board really accommodated you last month over and above to make sure this project would be successful. So I took it, I took it absolutely, if you want to take that, that we were the ones who were being attacked from both sides, that it was awful to that. It may not have been conveyed by you, it was conveyed by clearly to me, that was awful. It may not have been conveyed by you, it was conveyed by, by me, that it was awful that you might not get that, for them.
Well, I hope that I didn't make that.
No, I didn't, but.
I just, I just expressed my thanks, and I especially.
You did express your thanks, and that's why I was shocked the next day by someone walking on.
She's moving up.
But it's, it's, it's.
It was very.
She was, she was giving us a dynamic fire.
Hey, but that's okay.
I have a question.
Yeah, I'm trying to think of.
We are raising the preliminary at five, and I think construction was going to start a week before it was approved. Um, when did you receive start construction? Well, I, I think our, I spoke with our engineer, and I'm, I'm not sure, I don't know who's reaching out, um, they, his office is working on it, so.
So I can't hear you.
I'm sorry, I just.
Speak to.
Sorry, I can't face forward, but.
If you want, I'm the moderator.
Okay. My engineer reached out today, and they, they expect, you know, we'll be reaching out tomorrow to set up our coordination meeting to, uh, to make compliance plans that were making part of the, we're, we're, they are obviously more than labs, and so that's, I think they were providing outstanding, uh, engineering, actually, so they have been working on this. Everything still about the supermarket, and has approved and conditions, you know, sort of came with all that? Yes.
Less, less.
Well, that, that's really what we were, we announced was, you know, no, we're.
The concern that I have is obviously know that this resolution runs forty-five days, can be challenged, and hopefully not, but it could be.
Which is why I, I wanted my house to be, you know, dressed. I think, I think we want to put together collectively the season to move our possession after the house.
Tell you, it was only the first time the resolution got written down. I'm sorry that you didn't get it out of your ears, but you need to request it, if not, if not, I did get this copy like a week ago, it's ready.
If I had.
Oh, guys, I missed it, I didn't say supermarket, it is. Uh, the other question?
No.
Do we guys talk to the straight?
No.
All right. Commissioners, you've heard this lightning discussion of the resolution, um, what is your pleasure? Prove the resolution, may I have a motion?
Uh, question.
Commissioner, yes.
I'm just trying to find, um, I mean, we had.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you, it's there, but.
Last one we had, about some of the lighting to building standards, uh, last week.
That would not normally be a resolution. I think we should spread that. The, the, there is, the question was, I mean, talking about the lighting, the surveillance standards, and I, the resolution, I don't mean things like that.
Yes, prior, the only thing in the resolution is the reference of my letter. And only my letter states the general improvements is a part of this resolution.
The resolution talks to Victor, whether it's sent to the act, and they agreed at the last meeting to make the changes that Victor recommended, and so, even though it's not listed here, it's implied. Okay.
This chair, I just, I, I have to be clear, sir. What we've established for the event, approved to.
To give supermarket.
To, to rule supermarket's own.
Right now, only if possible, they may have to come back for amendment to the site plan, if they know in order, does that change the whole traffic? Not necessarily the supermarket around. Is that correct? That's what we don't explain. I'm sure better than Victor.
Yes, it's, it's, I'm wrong now, sir. Uh, the resolution is to permit the supermarket to proceed, uh, it's a resolution for preliminary final site plan, and also supermarket application, meets all the conditions that we discussed with last meeting. The landscaping, including the additional items, and if any other structures were to be promoted at the site, we have to move to the board, because redevelopment plan for that area states that each building should show architectures. And remember, there were only architects, and that's here in the supermarket. So this board felt that, that we were preliminary to the higher priority, and, uh, we should be monitoring the other aspects of this project, uh, condition, if we go back to the board, so we look at the bank, uh, the convenience store, and the restaurants, because they didn't have a tenant, they didn't have elevations. So really, we're looking at that, is supermarket, and supermarket, if it can't stand alone, we can stop it, uh, quite real, although if it's standing, they have the property acquired, they can't stand alone.
With, with the contour of the lane, where supermarket going to place it, it wouldn't, I think, if you're.
I'm sorry, Mr. Gordon, will you say that again, with the contour?
Yeah, contour of the lane, that's there, and I'm, I'm just trying to ask the engineer, uh, will there be a problem with building the supermarket there on the lane? You know, if you don't look at the contour of the lane, it's there, it really has a high elevation, a low elevation.
Looked at it previously, the application tested, it didn't give a grade, so it was designed wrong, yes. So it can be disshut.
It can be served, okay. Thank you.
Okay. Answer. I'm looking for a motion, guys.
I am, I'm, I'm.
I'm making a motion, seconded by Vice Chair Ross. Three of each calls.
So this is this year. Sorry. This is each call.
Councilman Gordon, Commissioner Gonzalez, Commissioner Carvallo.
Hi.
Thank you. Commissioner Chauvin. Commissioner Duplessis.
Hi.
Vice Chairman Ross, Kevin Hans.
Hi. Good luck.
Thank you. I'm, I'm.
Hopefully this.
Yeah, that's right.
My tax credit probably.
One, uh, this, the, the other business that we have to do tonight is a preliminary investigation report to determine whether certain plans, block eleven, block eight, and also seven, and block eleven, block eight, forty-seven, A, is in Elizabeth, qualified under the criteria set for, for redevelopment housing laws, NJ SA, open twelve A dash one, whatever, as an area, we need to redevelop, Mr. Deane.
Excuse myself?
Mr. Brown, do you join me up here? Thank you. Okay, we're going to take a two minute, this is very, very modest. As I said before, Mr. Deane is now going to do his study.
Good evening, members of the, what we're going to be discussing slightly briefly is.
Victor, you'd like to respond again. Could you stop me somewhere at the test point, or you're giving in this matter, and we could prove the whole, that nothing but the truth?
I do.
And I wish for the record.
Victor, even a, some players, some. What we have here inside is, we, redevelopment, preliminary investigation report, that the city, with the planning board, related to these areas, areas that need to be redeveloped. This area, the area that we were talking about, is the old Berry District, called the Red Street, it was the old Red Street back there, with the red bike, and, uh, it's, the piece of property, we have to stop, this is for two lots, eleven dash eight forty-seven, eleven dash eight forty-seven A. This board previously investigated this area back in June second, two thousand and five. At that time, there was three lots, um, eleven dash eight forty-seven, eleven dash eight forty-seven A, eleven dash eight forty-eight. This investigation is only looking at two of the lots, not entirely, but combined into lots, almost twenty, which is nineteen point six eight. So things have, because of, uh, in discussions with the city law, in discussions with our board adjournment, um, there have been numerous case law, federal and the city of Jersey, um, eleven Connecticut, Wall Fair in Jersey, three quarters, and, uh, Long Ranch in Jersey, and some other cases, that this board, we look at this information, done two thousand and five by this board, and the city council then adopted a new refining, then, um, in July of two thousand and five, this board had a special hearing to discuss what we were looking to do at that site. And that hearing discussed retail use, large lot, and all big lots retail, mixed with residential and boutique retail. If you refer to boutique retail, it's a smaller retailer, two thousand square stories, et cetera. And this board, over that course, uh, we looked at different plans submitted, we adopted, we planned, the city council adopted by the board this, that redevelopment plan, that was in two thousand and five. City council then, based on, uh, some issues of rejoining lot, and some case law, some, uh, not case law, some law issues, new issue of rejoining lot, you move one of the lots out of the area. And that was done in March eight, two thousand and five. So what we're looking to do tonight is to rehear this application, to feel that this is an area that needs to be redeveloped. It was previously called, uh, the term is lighting, perhaps, but you can call it the area that needs to be redeveloped. With this board, uh, makes a recommendation of finance, based on this planning board, that we have submitted, my firm has submitted to the city of Elizabeth, uh, you take a vote on, like, the feel of this area's needs and conditions, specify a local redevelopment house. So the state has set up guidelines through its local redevelopment house, uh, to utilize municipalities to investigate property, to deeply feel that the property meet those criteria. And the board only has a client, and one use of one of the A items, if through G, or not creation, basic creation, if only one, I feel this property meets multiple conditions, so really, you can meet one of these conditions. And in my opinion, uh, you mean one, two, three, four, five. So the, the board was submitted, we had the time for this hearing, we noticed property owners of that area, and the average item was still in place, whether there was a concern in this project. So we, we refer to, I don't know if it's, it will be on file, that is on file, uh, with the planning board secretary, and the documents that we refer to, you, you refer on file, it's number six, or is it issued for, is the number four, registered, and reported, and passed. So all of them, you can refer to it, but the screen on your computer, just the law was issued for. First item there is the zoning map. This is the existence of the zoning map, and the updated version of the zoning map of this board. We updated, uh, the management plan a number of years ago, for your members, and that updated management plan, we also updated city zoning map. And it's Victor, take the walk around my side, I think we can hear that. So this is the official city of Elizabeth map, and I'm.
Who are you?
You.
The right friends.
Yeah, I'm sorry, it's hard to get both sides. So.
I haven't been so long.
Is that a, very good point, David?
I kicked that key. Yes, this is not a term of battery.
Victor?
Yes.
If you stand over there quite further, point that it may go through, I think you should.
So on stage time, redevelopment study, these are the conditions that state with local redevelopment house law. It's, uh, it's state that the limited study area may be, may be determined to be needed to develop, if, after.
Victor, can you read, I'm not aware of what you're reading.
In the limited study area, may be determined to be needed to be developed, if after investigation, notice and hear, as provided, section six of PL nineteen ninety-two, this is the section of the local, M L U L, the governing body of municipality, our resolution concludes that this intended, that the limited areas.
Victor, I can't even hear you.
Whenever you read, it's not.
I don't think that the generalities of buildings are self-standard, unsafe, unsanitary, dilapidated, or obsolescent, or poses any certain characteristics, and, or as sold-out light air, which base has been inducted, unwholesome living, or conditions. My opinion, the site meets this criteria. Criteria D, discontinuance of the use of buildings previously used for commercial, manufactured, or industrial purposes, abandonment of such buildings, or, staying in a lot, or, so great for the state of district area, as an untenable, I feel is, area is that, as a condition. There's a missing D, areas with buildings or ruins, which are reasonably dilapidation, obsolescence, overcrowding, faulty rating or disney, lack of ventilation, light sanitary facilities, excessive land coverage, delirious, serious.
Oh, dear.
Those areas damage are obsolete by now, or any combination of those, or other factors, are detrimental to the safety, health, and morals who were well-averred, as I don't think. And in my opinion, the site would meet that criteria. Criteria F, areas in excess of five continuous years, urban buildings or ruins have been destroyed, consumed by fire, demolished or altered by the action of storm, fire, cyclone, tornado, earthquake, or other category in such a way that the aggregate assessed value of the area has been materially appreciated. In the last sentence, I would say, in any municipal, which is enterprise zone, has been designated, person, NJ, urban enterprise zone, execution of the actions prescribed in that, the adoption by the municipal, approved by NJ, urban enterprise zone, of the zone development plan for the year, of the enterprise zone, shall be considered sufficient for the determination of that area. So really, G, in this, shall we, done this before, say, with the waiver, so, if you meet G, it's just on its own, the area is needed, but because of circumstances that have occurred on this site, uh, with the major file, and, and we feel that this building With the major fire, and therefore we feel that this building, we have in your report, the report from the fire. Building, majority of buildings in a serious condition should not be beyond, also this industry report. But the study is going to start in four weeks. Report does show areas in that form. This is the front parcel that comes. That fronts along the way. As you can see, this is a photograph taken September eighteenth, two thousand and twelve, showing the unknown condition. That was mandated by the fire party, the structure was concrete steel. As you can see, it's in the photo, that they have been removed out fifty percent of the building on this side. About fifty percent of the building along the front, yeah, the foundation. These photos was a good stuff. What we have here is, we have a study that we originally approved in area development. Building itself did not fit the configuration, we convert it to the new uses. Industrial uses in there criticized. And the zone did not lend itself to be utilized for new types of retail, residential, commercial uses. Sit that high, it's fully able to destroy that block. And we're looking to restudy this, so we can also develop a new plan, go back to the council, so that we can review that.
This is the document. Yes, we're then the council will come up with a, you know, the exercise of power to start a local redevelopment housing law. So city council needs to adopt this redevelopment.
Yes, this is a little period for you.
So the object of the game is that we look at this plan, the pictures presented, yeah, any questions regarding it.
Is the board answering?
Mike?
I can't hear you.
Sorry. It's microphone, it's getting worse. You can hear much better when you're watching on TV. Bottom line is I think myself better get it this way.
The object of this is to say that this report, the pictures should pair with distributed to us to city council. So the city council can adopt by ordinance redevelopment plan. So what I'm asking is, are there any questions, Victor, or this presentation, or which are written in front of you, that's happening now? None? Are there any members of the board, have any comments for this redevelopment plan itself that's come forward? Would you settle here with this area?
I'm, I'm here, I got eighty-nine more, I'll say. Eighty-nine more, I'll say. I want to thank the board for looking at this, actually what you're doing right is. You're making recommendations to the government body, that this is in fact an area that you need to be developed. It's nothing to do with the plan, and the government body will be the main plan. I just want to make that clear, because there seems to be a little confusion, you know, there's a lot of areas, I just want to make sure the record is actually clear. But the thing is, considering that Martha, you see the ground, the estimate, the general, just indicating that we appreciate the advantage all the time. But it's our position, while we don't object, obviously the preliminary amendment to the council. That this should be an area that we need to be developed. Once it altogether stood acknowledged, that still possess certain rights, because back in, I guess it was two thousand and seven. We can actually obtain approvals of parcel or cyclones, there is a valid cyclone that exists on this parcel. We're cyclone, we could develop it as under the existing, and under the degree, under the existing, generally, you know, and all the other rights, I think it should be fine. But the fact is, we still possess our best rights under the redevelopment plan. That's the only reason that came for the technical qualifications, the chairman and board members, whatever.
Is there anyone else in the board who has any comments regarding this application? Seeing none?
When this goes, when this is presented to council, will a copy of the resolution and what has been previously reviewed be attached?
Victor says. Second, what was your question?
My question was, when this, should this be presented to council, or council also receiving a copy of the resolution and previous approval so that they?
Now, this is, this is not a big deal. What you're looking at tonight, do you feel that these two properties meet the findings of the planning board? That there is deteriorated conditions that previously written into the record. So it really is not, it's unrelated to the previous view, a previous approval that was to be gave to the area. This is just being that this area is two lots that comprise roughly twenty-eight. If this board feels that they meet the criteria established by the state of Jersey to be an area needed to be developed, that's all we will do. So we don't anticipate this.
So the bottom line is, if you feel that this plan meets that, I think they can make a trigger, that it meets it in, what, two, three, four categories? And any one of those will be enough, is that correct? So it leads to four times more than the normal orders, so may I have a motion to send this up to city council? And in case the city council, the planning board feels that this is an area that you need to be developed.
Make a motion.
Motion by the vice chairman Ross, seconded by. Council, Commissioner Carvalho, and Commissioner. Martha, please go.
Councilman Gollman? Commissioner Gonzalez? Commissioner Carvalho?
Aye.
Commissioner Chantel?
Aye.
Commissioner Duplessis?
Aye.
Vice chairman Ross? Chairman Hans?
There, there, there's. Just also, of course, anyone who knows, there's a journey, there's a first for P eleven, dash twelve, and then there's a concept. I have a question, very quickly, we are trying to answer that. This concept plan can be presented in the first chance, maximum, um, to know. Okay, we're gonna have to check into that, if not, whether the concept plan can be presented in four things like. So right now, it's technically the journey to the first concept. Um, may I have a motion to adjourn? Motion to adjourn. I believe our next meeting is the member first, thank you very much.